Good evening. The May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Anarondle County Council is called to order. The purpose of this meeting is to hear testimony on the proposed FY twenty-five county general and Board of Education budget. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We'll now have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Radhyan.
As we begin this evening's meeting, let us take a moment to pray in the manner we choose, or simply focus our intentions for the purpose at hand. Let us be guided by wisdom and fairness to address the challenges brought before us. Let us find compassion to help the marginalized. Let us not only speak of justice, but act in just ways. Let us remember that what may appear to divide us will never be greater than those things that unite us. Let us seek to govern in the image of love, as love holds the wisest answers. Amen. And please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill, or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills for the benefit of our members of the public.
An ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anarondle County. Bill number thirty-four twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill number thirty-five twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arrendal Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-six twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arrendal Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-seven twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-eight twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill number thirty-nine twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-two twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-one twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-two twenty-four, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Wad Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill number forty-three twenty-four, an ordinance concerning fee for switch local exchange access service, CMRS, and other nine-one-one accessible service. Bill number forty-four twenty-four, an ordinance concerning construction code, Department of Inspections and Permits Fees. Bill number forty-five twenty-four, an ordinance concerning public works utilities, metered water and wastewater charges. Bill number forty-six twenty-four, an ordinance concerning public works solid waste collection, solid waste service charge, solid waste landfill, and facility delivery fees. Bill number forty-seven twenty-four, an ordinance concerning finance taxation and budget income tax. Bill number forty-eight twenty-four, an ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payment service charge. And bill number fifty-three twenty-four, an ordinance concerning public works utilities, water and wastewater, capital facility recruitment charge, capital facility connection charges.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, I would like to remind everyone in the audience, whether testifying or just a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times. We have a couple of individuals who are here to make brief statements about the budget. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening. Madam Chair and members of the County Council, for the record, I am Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarondle County. Thanks for the opportunity to give you a brief overview of County Executive Stuart Pittman's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. The fiscal foundation of Anarondle County remains strong. This is reflected once again by receiving this year the Triple Crown credit ratings of triple A from three major credit agencies, as well as our projections for ending another year with a healthy fund balance. In fact, County Executive Pittman has declared the overall theme to this proposed budget to be staying strong. Overall, fiscal year twenty-four revenue from property tax and income tax are projected to be a combined forty-seven million dollars above estimates, largely due to fiduciary and reconciliation payments in our income tax distributions. The county also benefited from elevated investment income due to current high interest rates. Looking forward to fiscal year twenty-five, we are projecting continued growth for income and property tax revenue. However, revenue from real estate transactions remains depressed due to low transaction activity in a high mortgage interest rate environment. This year's proposed general fund budget is two-point-three-one-two billion dollars, no, let me say that again, two billion, three hundred twelve million, four hundred thirty-six thousand and three hundred dollars, an increase of one hundred seventy-five point one million, or about eight point two percent compared to the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-four. However, subtracting out the forty-five point four million of incremental fund balance and one-time revenue, this represents a hundred twenty-nine point seven million dollar increase, or six and a half percent. The fiscal twenty-five budget is balanced, and there is no structural deficit. All recurring expenses are being paid for with recurring revenues. The fiscal twenty-five budget continues the responsible fiscal management that Anarondle County is known for while delivering essential investments in the services and infrastructure on which residents depend. As County Executive Pittman outlined in his budget address, this year's budget makes key new investments in several areas. For public safety, the proposed budget funds a dramatic increase in police officer starting salary from sixty-two thousand one hundred sixty dollars to seventy thousand dollars a year, higher than any other current starting salary in the state. Proposed budget also funds staffing for the new real-time information center and increases funding for both police and fire department overtime. It also provides for a new firefight recruit class of seventy people to fill the ranks of our excellent fire department. Proposed budget also supports a new medical contract for the Department of Detention Facilities and Sheriff Suesker's initiative to put a security officer in every courtroom. The second category is public education. Proposed budget includes forty-eight point seven million dollars of new direct funding to the Board of Ed for a total of nine hundred twenty-nine point three million. The county also contributes funding for debt service, retiree healthcare, school health, school safety, and pay-go contributions to school construction, so that total support for the school system this year is one billion, one hundred sixty-seven thousand and five hundred dollars. This funding supports a three percent cost of living adjustment and a step for all units in accordance with the superintendent's requested compensation package, but unfortunately, we did not have the resources to fund the additional mid-year one and a half percent COLA the Board of Education added to the superintendent's request. The proposed budget meets all blueprint requirements and adds funding to reinstate middle school athletics. The third focus is health and human services programs. The proposed budget transitions several successful initiatives, started with the federal recovery funding over to county general funds. These include the Healthy Communities Program, the Health Ambassador Program, the Violence Interruption Program, and expanded crisis response and funding for the Anarondle County Food Bank. Proposed budget also supports two new child enrichment centers for childcare and provides retiree benefits, paid holidays, and supplemental salary increases for school-held nurses. Final category is critical government services, the largely unseen mechanics of keeping our government running for its residents and businesses. Key new investments include increased resources for our Office of Information Technology to support new software and hardware packages and to enhance our cybersecurity protections. There are also several new positions in our Rec and Parks Department to maintain our growing parks inventory and to provide new programs for residents. And the proposed budget includes additional resources for the county's comprehensive rezoning, outreach efforts, and planned zoning code updates. Proposed budget fully funds our annual pension and retiree healthcare contributions and continues the county's policy of maximizing our contribution to the Revenue Reserve, or Rainy Day Fund, at eight percent of the forecasted operating revenues. The county successfully negotiated agreements with all eleven of its bargaining units. Proposed budget also includes a three percent cost of living adjustment for non-represented employees and the same for contractual workers. Proposed budget also supports our vibrant library system and world-class Anarondle Community College with new funding of one point seven million and two point four million dollars respectively. Proposed county utility rates have modest increases consistent with the program adopted in the current budget year. The annual trash and recycling fee is proposed to be four hundred and four dollars, that's up twenty-four dollars from this year's rate, and the tipping fee is proposed to be, to increase from eighty-five dollars to one hundred dollars. Water and sewer rates are proposed at three dollars and forty-five cents and six dollars and six cents per one thousand gallons respectively. These are increases of twenty-two cents for water rates and thirty-nine cents for sewer rates. The average annual bill for residential water and sewer customer is estimated to be about eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, which remains the lowest in the region. The county stormwater fee is proposed to increase by five percent to ninety-eight dollars and forty cents annually for a single-family residential home. In addition to the operating budget, the six-year capital improvement program is before the County Council now. The proposed capital budget is well within all of the county's debt affordability guidelines and is more than ten million dollars under our affordability limit for the cumulative six-year program. The capital budget provides full funding for all current school construction programs and maximizes state grant funding opportunities. Funding is included for the new Glenn Burney Library and the Community College Dragon Building renovation and moves up the timetable for the Community College HCAT relocation. There are sixteen new capital projects in the general fund. These include a new Edgewater Recreation Center and a new Marley Creek Regional Park in our Parks Class, four new road safety projects in our Roads and Bridges Class, and a new multicultural center and Glenn Burney Town Center revitalization in our General County Class. To support the expenditures in the twenty-five budget, the County Executive has proposed the following tax rates. The county's property tax revenue cap calculation provides for a rate of ninety-eight point three cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and the County Executive has proposed a rate consistent with that amount. This is a small increase from the current rate of ninety-eight point zero cents and remains the lowest rate among the Big Six Maryland counties. The proposed local income tax rate remains unchanged at two-point-seven percent for taxable income up to fifty thousand dollars for single filers, seventy-five thousand dollars for joint filers. For single filers, taxable income above fifty thousand dollars and below four hundred thousand dollars is currently taxed at a two-point-eight-one percent rate. The FY twenty-five budget proposes a modest increase to two-point-nine-four percent for that income range. For joint filers, the two-point-nine-four percent rate is proposed for taxable income between seventy-five thousand and four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The current tax rate of three-point-two percent remains unchanged for taxable income above four hundred thousand dollars for single filers and four hundred eighty thousand dollars for joint filers. On average, county residents pay the fifth lowest rate in the state. The rates for the county hotel tax, recrodation and transfer tax, and rideshare fee are proposed to remain unchanged. The county's nine-one-one fee, which is applied to mobile phone bills, is currently seventy-five cents, the lowest in the state. The FY twenty-five budget proposes a twenty-five percent, no, twenty-five cent increase to one dollar to support our nine-one-one efforts. And finally, the County Executive is proposing a new fee schedule for permitting fees, which have not been updated since two thousand and three. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to present a budget overview tonight. The County Executive, the entire budget team, look forward to working with the County Council and the auditor as we work together to strike a budget to meet the priority needs of our county residents. Copies of the entire budget, including budget highlights, are available on the Budget Office website at www.aacounty.org. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Skip Ald, CEO of Anarondle County Public Libraries.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and council members. I have a very brief speech to give, and I give these talks at your budget hearings primarily for our audience because I want to make sure that our audience hears what the library needs are and what kinds of things we're talking about. We, of course, met earlier, I guess it was Monday, so you know what we're looking for. But let me just start. Good evening. I'm Skip Ald, CEO of Anarondle County Public Library. I'm here this evening to thank the County Executive for funding nearly all of the staff market rate adjustments in his proposed budget. I'm urging the council to finish the job and find an additional three hundred and two thousand dollars to fully fund the library's request. Most library staff are still paid less than their peers across the state. We've made major progress in the last year, and we'd like nothing better than to stop coming to you with his request. So I urge you to help us get all staff to market. Additionally, I'd like to request your serious consideration of several positions that we desperately need. These include two positions in our materials management department, a maintenance mechanic, a human resources specialist position focused on learning and development, and an equity officer. These support departments have been chronically under-resourced in personnel. These positions would make a tremendous difference in our ability to serve the public and to support our employees. Thank you very much for your consideration. And I also want to invite all of you and our entire audience, whether here in person or if this is being televised, to come to our Community Day Festival this Saturday at the New River Beach Library, that runs from ten AM to one PM. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open our public hearing on the proposed FY twenty-five budget. We'll now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When your name is called, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. First on my list is Ms. Leah Paley.
My name is Leah Paley, and I'm representing the Anarondle County Food Bank, which is located at one-twenty Marbury Drive in Crownsville, Maryland. Thank you, distinguished council members, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm the CEO of the Anarondle County Food Bank, and we're here to request that you leave the two million seventy-nine thousand, excuse me, seventy-three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars in financial support that was included in the County Executive's proposed FY twenty-five budget to support the work of the food bank. Without this additional funding, we'll be forced to cut our budget for food assistance as well as to lay off some of our workforce. We would have to cut the budget in half for our food procurement. And we are so very grateful for the support that we've received from the council, from the county over the years, especially the last four years, where we've received five-point-four six million dollars in ARPA funding to support our neighbors experiencing food insecurity. And this funding is extremely critical to helping us meet our mission. Last year, in collaboration with our seventy-six network partners, we distributed three-point-four million pounds of food and basic essentials to our neighbors, and that includes over one million pounds of fresh produce and lean proteins. Because of our size and scope, we're able to procure items at the lowest available price point, and purchasing, as opposed to relying heavily on food donations, ensures that our neighbors are provided with the most nutritious foods, which are linked to better health outcomes, which disrupt the negative social determinants of health that are frequently associated with low-income households. The pandemic may be over, but the need for supplemental food is not. We're averaging forty-nine thousand instances of service every month. That's four percent more than we were last year. So the need remains extremely high, and while we are going to serve anyone and everyone that seeks our assistance by way of our partners, we're working strategically to be in those communities that are considered high-poverty areas to ensure that no one is left behind. In closing, to ensure that our food-insecure neighbors have continued access to fresh nutritious food, I urge you to leave the two million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars budgeted for the food bank intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tanisha Johnson? Ms. Vicki Delair? State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Vicki Delair. My address is five-five-one Hamilton Avenue. Is that what you asked me, my address? Okay, good. I'm not processing yet. Okay, my name is Vicki Delair. I am the Executive Director of Love Wins Movement and the Mission's Leader for the Church at Severn Run. We are a network partner for the Anarondle County Food Bank, and they have been a tremendous blessing to us. We started a food pantry in the beginning of COVID, thinking food insecurity wasn't really a thing in our area, because we're in the suburbs. Who needs food in the suburbs? I'll give you some numbers. Last year, we served ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-one people. We delivered over five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight deliveries to different families in our area. Each week, we have about three hundred new families. We're delivering about two hundred, two hundred and fifty families a week, and these are all mostly families, multi-generational. A lot of people are in the Alice population, that asset-limited, income-constrained, employed. They just don't have enough to make ends meet at the end of the month. We have one specific family that came to us about a month ago, and they have thirteen people in their family. It's a lot of kids, and then three adult parents, so it's multi-generational. And they actually have not had cell phone service for the last two and a half months because they didn't have enough money to pay their phone bill. So it was either pay the phone bill or eat. They're now currently living in the Red Roof Inn because they were through a private landlord, and the private landlord, they didn't pay their rent for two months because he was laid off. So most people are living paycheck to paycheck to paycheck to paycheck. So what does the Anarondle County Food Bank do? They provide us with so much good, quality food, and I cannot stress that enough. It is, it's fresh produce, it's meats, it's healthy fruits and vegetables. It gives us the opportunity to serve our communities well, which I think is really worth noting. Food access has resulted in improvements in their situation that go beyond having enough to eat.
Thank you, Ms. Delair.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Sorry.
I'm sorry? You can? Okay.
Can you come back up real quick? Then, reference to, you said Severn Run Church, right? Is the building that, or the space, I should say, that's adjacent to the church, is that still on the process of being remediated?
Yes. So it is almost done. Expected date of end of June-ish. But yeah, so the goal is to actually be able to partner with the food bank to bring more dignity and allow people to shop in our place, so that they'll be able to pick what they actually need and pick what works for their families and not have us choosing for them.
Thank you. I just want to make sure the county was expediting or at least helping you facilitate, because at one point, there was a lot of issues on what was the front of the road or whatever with that parcel?
Oh, yeah, there was a lot of that, and it's still not resolved. As long as we don't have plumbing, we can, we're fine. So we're just not having plumbing.
Thank you. Sean Ashworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair and County Council, for allowing me to share my voice this evening. I live at thirty-four thirty-two Old Crown Drive. I am the founder of Food for Thought Community Outreach Services, and I am a network partner with Anarondle County Food Bank. And I want to first thank you for the little over two million dollars that you have already put in the budget for the twenty-twenty-five. Probably want to ask for a little bit more, but that's a whole nother story, I'm sure. Just like what you just heard, I've been doing this work since two thousand and eighteen. My pantry on-the-go service, the Brooklyn Park area, and then I also, with my church service in the Edgewater community. And when I tell you the stories that I hear on a monthly basis about how people come and they talk about how they have to make a decision, no one should have to make a decision about, do I put gas in my car? Do I pay my car insurance so that I have some insurance, or do I get food? We all know since COVID, and I don't know it'll ever change, is the cost of food, the cost of rent, housing, everything has gone up. And I have families, I just had a family call me today, actually. She has five kids, and they are in need of food. They come every single month. But when you have five kids who eat, right, it's hard to spread that out. And so I would just ask that you would keep the money, and big about a little bit more, to add in, we have families, and the other burden that is happening across our county, state, nationally, is SNAP benefits. If you make a dollar more, you lose your SNAP benefits. And so we're not just, at least what I see, I'm not just serving families who are living impoverished or homeless or unhoused. I'm, we're feeding families who have good jobs, who just no longer have the extra money. And so Anarondle County Food Bank, and what they do, is needed. I want to thank you on behalf of all of the citizens who come out to receive, please fund Anarondle County Food Bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Myers?
My name is Pamela Myers. I live at seventy-six thirty Found Artifact Drive in Odenton, and I'm the Board Treasurer for the Anarondle County Food Bank. Thank you to the County Council for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here tonight to ask you to leave intact the two million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars in financial support for the work of the Anarondle County Food Bank currently included in the County Executive's proposed twenty-twenty-five budget. This issue is important to me personally, as someone who grew up in Anarondle County and who chose to remain here to raise my own family. I'm proud to live in a place where there is support for the food bank. In addition to donating money and food items, I'm also grateful for the opportunity to support the food bank through my volunteer service on the Board of Directors, in particular, helping to ensure that donations and grants such as this are spent appropriately and accounted for properly. While community food drives provide us with canned goods and other shelf-stable items, the need is greater. Financial support from grants like this allow the food bank to supplement the donations by purchasing items such as meats, fish, and fresh produce that require additional resources to store and distribute. These purchases help improve the nutritional options available to those who receive support through the food pantries that we supply. With twenty-four percent of Anarondle County households below the Alice threshold, yet above the federal poverty line, this means that they may not qualify for federal assistance programs such as SNAP benefits. This also means that many working people in our community must rely on the resources provided by the Anarondle Food Bank to their local pantries to keep food on the table and their families fed and healthy. In conclusion, we want to thank the County Council for the previous support of the Anarondle Food Bank and respectfully ask you to leave intact the full amount of two million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars in the fiscal twenty-five budget. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this important issue.
Thank you. Brian Dag? Did I say it? Did I get that right?
Yeah, you're pretty close. My name is Brian Dag. I am a resident of District Five. I live at fourteen Dark Star Court in Edgewater, and I am the Board Chair of the Anarondle County Food Bank. And I am here, too, to ask to keep intact the two million seventy-three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars appropriated in the budget for all the good work that everyone's talked about. I've been involved as a board member on the food bank for four and a half years. It'll be five years in August. And I got involved, I have five kids, which, by the way, our water and sewer bill is way higher than the average. I wrote that down to share with my kids, just so they tap back on the showers a little bit. But I would go and have lunch back before COVID with my kids. We're Central Elementary, and then, and then now they're in high school and middle school. But I would see what the kids brought for lunch, and we were familiar with the Backpack Buddies program, but I didn't know where it came from, didn't know where it originated. So I asked around. Long story short, my previous business partner was on the board at the time, and I just went to him and said, hey, how can I get involved? I'm seeing what's passing as good nutrition, and we are blessed to provide our kids healthy food, and I saw so much going underserved. So I got involved with the food bank. The other thing is, you know, people have this preconceived notion, when you say Anarondle County, they think Annapolis. They're like, there ain't no way there's people who need this stuff. And it's just not true. And so the funding allows us to continue the mission. It also allows us to purchase food, culturally relevant food that's nutritious, and things that people actually want to eat. I joke sometimes, be like, if you don't buy Dinty Moore beef stew for your family, you probably don't want to donate it, because they don't want it either. So please keep intact the funding. I appreciate all of you, and thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Thompson?
Good evening. This is shaping up to be like the old Sixty Minutes point-counterpoint. My name is Chuck Thompson. I live at seventy-eight fifty-four Bachenview Drive. I retired a year ago after forty-two years in budgeting for a large federal government contractor. I've sat through many budget meetings, so I feel your pain. I have to admit, your fund accounting takes it to another level. After listening to the budget meetings, I'm concerned about where the general fund is heading once the COVID era funding winds down and the funding for Blueprint for Maryland's Future reaches a steady state. I believe the county structure is being built that is unsustainable at the current tax rates. And just to get myself familiar with what's going on, I took a look at where things were before COVID and compared to the FY twenty-five budget. And population in FY nineteen was five hundred and eighty thousand. It's forecast to be six hundred and twenty-two thousand, or a seven percent increase, while the general funds increased from one-point-six billion to two-point-three seven hundred million dollars, or a forty-seven percent increase. The budget's increasing much quicker than the population. That's, that leaves quite a tab for someone to pick up, and I can see some early trends for Anarondle County taxpayers. In two thousand and nineteen, the income tax was a flat rate at two and a half percent. Now we have a three-tiered progressive rate with a cap at three-point-two percent. The twenty-nineteen property tax rate was ninety point two cents per one hundred. Now it's ninety-eight, and the FY twenty- Now we have a three-tiered progressive rate with a cap at 3.2%. The 2019 property tax rate was 90.2 cents per 100. Now it's 98, and the FY25 budget proposed another round of tax and fees increases. I request a sensitivity analysis to be performed to assess potential out-year impacts to the general fund and the resulting tax structure. You may have to, because of the reduced funding from COVID era and the increase in the blueprint. You may have to go back to the early 2000s for federal funding assumptions due to the last 16 years of huge deficit spending. Please do not authorize any new increases in taxes and fees until the county executive can answer some basic questions. Is he going to pass the impact off to county taxpayers? Is he going to downsize the bureaus? What are his plans? And please inform the residents. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kurt Svensson?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Svensson, and I live in Arnold, Maryland. My testimony is really directed to my fellow citizens. I worked in the county budget office for over 20 years, about half of that as the Deputy Budget Officer. In the two and a half years since retirement, I've been advocating for transparency and open data, because I happen to know what's really available. The 400-page budget book has a ton of info, but even that only goes so far. The budget data and development explorer known as the Buddy Tool shows stuff in a more user-friendly way, but that, too, only goes so far. Both tools exclude important budget information. Here's one example. How much is budgeted for animal control in the fiscal '25 proposed budget? You can't tell. It's buried within the details of the $61.6 million budget of the Police Admin Services Bureau. That's as detailed as it gets. Without this kind of information, a true understanding of the budget is impossible. Thankfully, for the third year in a row, the county executive has authorized the release of the budget data file that underlies the budget. This more detailed file provides the answer to the animal control question and many other insights. At first glance, though, this file looks like a vast dump of indiscernible data. That's why I made two easy-to-use tools that let you get to that information. Links to both tools are on my Google site named AA County Citizen Share. That is AA County Citizen Share. I encourage you to look at it, and I encourage the county to make similar tools available on its website. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the number of folks that signed up in advance. Is there anyone here else who wishes to speak? If you do, please could... Oh, you're right. My apologies. Sharah Day.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sharah Day. I live in the Tanners Springs community in Glen Burnie. But I want to thank all of you for hearing our concerns and allocating money for benefits and a pay increase for school health nurses and health assistants. Keeping this proposition within the budget isn't just about numbers, it's about responsibility. We have health assistants right now that are currently homeless that work with school health. We need help. It's about showing that we can achieve our goals by retaining current employees, attracting quality candidates, providing a living wage, and being comparable to other counties with compensation. It's about setting a precedent that this county cares about continuity of care and for the children of Anaronda County. We please ask that Mr. Pittman's proposal is kept in the budget as an investment in our future. That includes 11 paid holidays, match retirement with a raise to offset the amount we're required to put in, and a cool the race. We desperately need this for retention of staff and to lessen turnover at school health. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the number of people who signed up in advance. If there's anyone else here, you can form a line behind the microphone, and we'll just roll through anyone else who wants to speak this evening.
My name is Georgia Brinkley. I'm actually from Dunkirk. I believe that's District 7. I'm with School Health Services. I just want to follow what Sharah just said, just give you some numbers, just to support what she was saying. As of right now, just bear with me, I have, just wanted to give you a couple of numbers. School health staff render care to almost 87,000 public school students in 129 different locations across the county. In order to provide these services and program oversight, school health employs approximately 350 full-time, part-time, and on-call substitute healthcare professionals. This includes approximately 151 registered nurses, 167 health assistants, 20 LPNs, vision and hearing techs around six, and six admin and clerical support staff. Some other numbers I just wanted to share with you. And our accomplishments from July to March, our total health room visits are approximately Crisis intervention that we have done is 10,539 cases. Health screenings, 50,443. We've provided health education to 41,425 students. We've had conferences with students, parents, and AACPS staff of approximately 22,893, and 141 home visits. And referral for healthcare resources is approximately 1,729. So I just wanted to share those numbers with you. School health, we do a lot in school health. It's not just taking care of students when they come in. We do a lot of case management. We work with a lot of the staff in the schools to try and provide support for students in crisis. We have a... Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to testify on the FY25 budget?
My name's Christine Moore. I live at 307 Archer Avenue. I am a teacher in Anaronda County. Public schools actually work at this very school. We -- I'm not very prepared, so here I am. We, as teachers, are questioning why that 2% mid-year isn't being funded. We want to know why our cost of healthcare is rising and our percentages in COLAs aren't matching those raises. Goods and services across the board have risen 8% just this year alone. We can't survive buying our groceries. I'll be joining, coming to the food bank very soon, the rate that I'm getting paid. So the proposed increase of a 3% or 2% COLA is just not enough. You are losing good teachers to other counties who pay better. You are. You also can't get enough teachers to want to teach here, so now you've created other issues like class sizes, behavior issues, and things like that, that, again, you're going to lose good teachers to other places who are handling those things better. I love my job. I live here and work here, but we are increasing what we give to teachers every day, every year, and not giving them the compensation to be able to handle that in a way that is acceptable to living. So we hope that you can increase that and give those mid-year proposed increases and help us actually be able to live while we teach the children of our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, FY25 budget testimony? Is there -- the public hearing on the FY25 budget is now closed. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Madam Chair? Yes.
I just first want to thank everyone for coming out today. I specifically want to thank our health, school health staff and nurses. I have three kids in the public school system. One is just, let's say, a frequent flyer, but no matter which one of my kids goes into the nurse's office, what I love is that if I get a call, the first thing out of the nurse's mouth is, "Everything is okay." So just thank you for everything you do. I know you get a variety of cases every day of all ages, and it's just so much appreciated from this parent.
Everybody good? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
The county council is adjourned until May 16, 2024, at 9:00 a.m., when we will meet virtually to continue our department budget presentations. Remember to check the county website for important information and updates on our meetings. Thank you, and have a great night.